Welcome, everyone. It's Monday, October tenth, twenty twenty-two. It's time for our regularly scheduled city council meeting. I would certify the meeting notice.
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with Idaho Code seven four dash two zero four.
For call rule.
Councilmember Heller.
Present.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Here.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Thank you. Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item G is changes to the agenda. Nothing from staff. Nothing from the council. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second, I had a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing under per call rule.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes. Thank you. There's no special business this evening. We'll move on to items under G ordinances, resolutions, and contracts. Item one is a public hearing on S U B F Y twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 two. On sick town home subdivision. Is the applicant here? Yes, sir, if you would. This is a public hearing item. How you're walking up. Our protocol is we will hear from the applicant who will present the application. We will then hear from our staff. Council is free to ask questions during or the conclusion of the presentation by the applicant and same for when Ms. Thornborough makes presentation on behalf of the city. After those two items, we will open the public hearing and allow anyone who's here that wishes to testify regarding this item an opportunity to do so. Before we begin, council, is there anyone that needs to declare a conflict regarding this application? That that would mean you have a financial interest in it of some fashion, or you have a relationship, legal relationship?
No.
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 Okay, very good. Thank you, sir. If you would, give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Jeff Hatch with Hatch Design Architecture. Our address is two hundred West Thirty-Sixth Street in the wonderful town of Garden City. Everybody hear me?
You might speak up just a little bit. Keep that microphone. Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right.
And then if we can make that we're on the right, that go away or move or very good.
Well done. Okay. Mayor Evans and council members, thank you for your consideration of our application this evening. It's a brief recap of the project. It's nestled on Reed next to Harren Park along the river. The property is zoned R three and we're not proposing any revisions to the comprehensive plan or the zoning for the property. We did locate a property in the general area with the same R three zoning that has a similar density to that, and that would be the Fortieth Street cottages off of Fortieth Street. So just to, you know, for reference or comparison. Our development has a proposed six townhomes with a detached clubhouse, which is in many need to the site. The site's a little challenging in shape as it's, you know, it lends itself to the density, but doesn't necessarily lend itself to the access. If we were to comply to the distinct request of the design review committee, we would need to have our townhomes rotated ninety degrees, which would force one townhome to engage the street. While the balance of the townhomes would just be engaging that drive aisle. We worked fairly diligently with design review over about five months, gaining information, comments, and feedback to try to better address that. And in doing so, we have created a couple of different primary design features to this property. First off, we originally had all of the townhomes together. And in talking with the designer view committee in particular, there was an emphasis to engage the pedestrian pedestrian activity and connection to the park. And so through those five months, we went ahead and broke the buildings apart, creating a pedestrian access through the center of the development. And then from our our P and Z hearing to our current proposed site plan, we met with city staff in regards to the proposed access from our site down to the green belt to better address the function of bicycle and pedestrian traffic, both now and in the future, as this area continues to grow and densify. And then also from a safety standpoint, it was requested that we widen that pedestrian easement and access by about two feet from the previously proposed six-foot access to an eight-foot. In addition, there were a range of comments about our planned unit development and wanting to exemplify the ideals of that planned unit development. In doing so, we went back and reviewed our arborist report. Majority of trees on site or elm trees and in the report were in poor health. But we did have a fairly substantial twenty-six inch caliber silver maple, which we worked with A C H D to narrow up our access points, the fire department to confirm that we could do that and still maintain the required aerial apparatus. And we were able to preserve that existing twenty-six inch silver maple as well. As far as the subdivision goes, subdivision is broken up into a series of lots for the townhome. Then we have our our common lot for that pedestrian access, common lot for the access road, and then dedicated for the the common amenities and that clubhouse. Those would be owned and operated by the HOA, not an individual owner. Part of the complexity and challenge of the site is having pedestrian access along the street, but that pedestrian access ends with a sector box, a fire hydrant, a tree, and Harren Park has no public sidewalk on Reed Street. And so we were challenged with how do we connect and create an engaging pedestrian the inviting space with no connection point? And so we took it upon ourselves to segment the development and engage with designer view on different means and methods in order to propose a pedestrian access that would be vibrant and and safe and also functional. And in the last month, working with city staff, the highlighted in yellow is a revised version of our green belt access, which provides a more convenient way to get both northbound and southbound on the green belt versus a single access. So with that, one of the considerations before you this evening as an action item for this would be the consideration of that access and and if the committee finds the design and staff coordination to be appropriate, which we did want to to go ahead and not only conceptually come up with an idea, but actually work with staff and understand their their means and their intentions, and then revise that and bring that for you today. And so that's what I wanted to just present the latest design concept for that. Oh, come now. The other consideration is despite being under ten townhomes. Last time I was before you with a planned unit development, it was a very keen emphasis by this council that we provide as many unique floor plans to a development as possible and having larger units and not so many studio one-bedroom components. And so this particular client and proposed project would have three and four-bedroom dwellings, and we are proposing five unique types for a six-town home development. So it's a brief recap of our plan unit development. We worked very diligently on our public access and connectivity, creating a public access to the park and then working with staff to widen that to an additional eight-foot public access easement. So as our our common areas from our plan in development P and Z hearing, we've increased by about two and a half percent from that, just with the modifications based on preserving that tree and narrowing up our drivelanes. And then with that, our mitigation has been improved as well, saving that twenty-six inch caliber silver maple. And then I just wanted to emphasize the the last kind of key point with the P U D is that variety of housing, which we feel done a fairly diligent job achieving. As far as some of the staff findings, just to highlight each of the individually developments can be maintained individually. And the clubhouse and amenities are proposed to be ran by the HOA. So our request this morning or as approved by P and Z, but also to to your consideration would be the request for the reduction of our setback on the street-facing side for our clubhouse, which again, we wanted to engage that sidewalk and and P and Z found that to be favorable. And then the request for the the rear setback as well, which has to do with our fire engine apparatus access based on, you know, the complexity and challenges of the site. In review of our our street and access, we've received favorable comments from A C H D. And feel that the reduction in the front setback allows for that common area and visitor parking to be sufficient while also providing the fire engine access. So we didn't need the fire engine apparatus access. We pull that clubhouse back. And in order to maintain the minimum parking spaces required, which we're requesting no parking reduction for this development, we were able to achieve that with a minimum setback encroachment on the front. During our neighborhood meeting, there were some comments and concerns about an encroachment that we were proposing to our adjacent neighbor to the north and and working with them and and working with the client, we're able to pull that back off into an appropriate setback. So that is something that we have amended. And also, I'm working with the neighbors, we're able to minimize the height of those buildings. I think we're allowed to go almost double the height that we're proposing, but that was a concern that we wanted to be sensitive to. And then lastly, just working with staff, it's been an enjoyable time trying to achieve a pedestrian access that will serve both the community and this project today, but is designed appropriately so that as the neighborhood expands, we'd be able to satisfy that density in the future. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Counselor, questions of Mr. Hatch?
Mr. Mayor, a question.
Certainly.
I'm a little confused about clubhouse versus guest parking. Can you articulate that? I guess I'm confused how it can be both. I mean, you use clubhouse, but by understanding it's enclosed guest parking. How is that shared by six units? Because isn't it owned by that first? I'm a little confused to how that that works. If you could explain that to me.
Great, great question. I'll elaborate on that. So this unit does not own the clubhouse. The clubhouse is owned and operated by the HOA. The HOA has a C C N Rs, which we provided a draft of, which we will work with with the city attorney in order to make sure that the verbiage meets the intent. But what we found in areas that become increasingly more dense over time, that if you propose a reduction in parking or at least the minimum parking, especially next to public publicly accessible amenities, you have a tendency for people to use that parking, not relevant to the people that live on that property. So in order to ensure that guest parking is being used for guests, we wanted to make sure that the HOA had control. So everyone that has a townhome in this development will have access to that parking. And similar to use of a clubhouse, you would schedule the availability of time for those parking spaces.
Hence the name clubhouse. All right. Okay, I understand. So that's reservations.
Yes.
By the people who live there.
Correct.
Thank you. The other question I had is it was denied by the design review committee. I think some of their concerns were, I think, potential conflict, because that's going to be a public walkway through the development, correct? And one of them, I think, was potential conflict with vehicles in the development with that. How is there a way to address that? Or is or how how did how do you mitigate that concern that design review had about that? It was one of the reasons why they denied it.
Yeah, great question. So there's a a couple of ways that we've done that and continue to do that. One would be the widening of that pathway. Eight feet is a fairly substantial amount of space. The other thing, this keynote number fourteen, which you can't see the label, is actually little tread bumpers. And so if you were to roll over that with a tire, you're going to notice a vibration as far as
Like a little speed bump, basically.
Correct. And then in addition to that, as you can see, in this location is where our our entry would be and the garage is away from that in order to alleviate issues. The other consideration is was we have two access points, which is fairly, you know, in my mind, is kind of impossible, but A C H D was in favor of this. And the reason why we did that is so that if you own a vehicle at this location, you can back up away from that and create a habit of safe travel towards that. And if you own one on the other side, you can back up on the opposite direction and still exit facing that pedestrian access at all times.
So it's not one way. It's either or.
Yes.
Depending on what side.
And it's significantly wide enough for an aerial apparatus fire engine. So you can definitely do dual traffic in that manner.
Mr. Mr. Hatch, I apologize for interrupting, but as you were referencing the the drawing, I think you may have thought that the mouse was moving, but I wasn't tracking what areas you were pointing to or referring to.
So right here, we have a traffic calming device on both sides of that pedestrian access.
Number fourteen.
Number fourteen.
White mouse on it.
Might be able to have this in a couple of formats that are easier to highlight things in. So let's try this one. Still sharing. Great. Okay, just make sure it is screen sharing. So so here would be a traffic calming device on both sides of the pedestrian access. And then the width of this enables a a vehicle that's parked in that garage to exit and then head towards that easement versus being forced to back up into it. Our 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 design, we wanted to intend that on both sides of that pedestrian access, you can back up in a manner that you're always facing that easement. You wouldn't need to be backing up into that easement ever.
Hey, other questions?
Yes, Mr. Mary.
Yes.
Couple, anyway.
Were you through, Councilmember Jacobs?
I'll wait.
Okay.
May ask my question.
Okay. All right. Go ahead.
Mr. Mr. Hatch, I appreciate you being here this evening and the creativity of this proposal. My, I do have an ask. I could not really read the floor plans very well, so and they're not in the package. Jen, is there any way we could get a printout real quick? So I can review that. And while you're doing that, Jen, I'll ask some other general questions. Okay. So, Mr. Hatch, I understand that you've now agreed to retain and save this silver maple. Is is that correct?
That is correct.
In the recommendation from the arborist, I believe it's an arborist, they indicated that there is a juniper and a Norway maple that they would recommend or or identify it as salvageable or a good good candidates to retain. Is it possible to retain those as well as the silver maple?
I don't think our I don't think our landscape architect is here tonight, but I can kind of speak to the capacity that she she gave us. And talking with our landscape architect and her her dialogue with the arborist and it was of her understanding that we don't it's not favorable to really save any of the trees, because any of the trees are not in, you know, great health. Some of them are in fair health. And so we actually had to work with her and say, no, the city really wants us to preserve significant trees on the site. And she said, well, if you're talking significant trees, the only significant tree is the twenty-six inch silver maple. But I I caution you that the arborist said it's in fair health, but it's not in great health. And so we said, well, if that's the most significant tree, we'll definitely preserve that one.
Because again, referencing the material provided, it was rated as poor. And so my question is, why would you save a tree that's rated poor when you have other trees that are rated fair and you're not saving those?
That's a excellent question for our landscape architect. And and talking with her sounded like those other trees being salvageable didn't necessarily mean that they were something that was worth mitigating. And so we emphasized and actually went back and talked to her and said, you know, the city would really like us to preserve trees, which trees are worth saving. And she said that silver maple is is something that's worth saving.
Then there's there's notes and and questions about the fencing. And I I also have questions about fencing. If if the intention is to have an open flow and access to the green belt, why would you put the fencing up? I just want to understand that, particularly, you know, close to Harren Park.
What fencing?
In the the packet, it indicates that there's a fence between the property and Harren Park. Is that not the case?
Harren Park kind of L shapes around our property. So this keynote number ten would be a fence. So we do have a fence down here separating privacy of the parking lot of the park to here. And as far as this access, this access is intended to be very much public and very much inviting and accessible. There's no intentions of putting a fence or obstruction back there for the general public.
So, but on the on your note, eight says wrought iron fence along that whole property, a whole line along, I think, to Teresa's point. So we want to have open flow and open space and things like that, and fencing kind of blocks that, right? So on the other note, you have eight, you have wrought iron fence running the whole length of the property. And then you also then you also have a fence running the whole border with Harren Park. I think the question is, is we want to have that open flow and things like that? Why have any of that fencing at all? I mean, what what was what was the purpose of having that? That fence, why have a fence backing up to the greenbelt? Why have a fence backing up to Harren Park? I think is what you're asking.
I think we'd be fine removing that fence. I don't have any issues with that as a condition.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one other question, but I would prefer to wait until Jen is present so that she and Mr. Hatch can both hear it.
Any other questions? Hey, if you'll just hold tight for a few minutes, we'll let Jenna get back with the with the floor plans. While we're waiting, council, I can just, in a general comment, we have properties all along the city that are adjacent to the green belts that are segregated with the fence. City Hall West. Waterfront District. That's that's not an unusual circumstance to segregate private property from the public property with some kind of fence. So that's just information.
Correct. Thank you.
Yeah. Hey, we had another question from Councilmember Jorgensen, Ms. Thornborough, and we're you're able to ask that now, because she wanted you to be here when she asked the question.
My question is, there's a a statement that the the common open spaces may not be within common lots. Is that accurate?
That is, and part of the exhibit that we provided was prepared to showcase that and explain it.
I I want to make sure I'm looking at the most current, that I'm not missing something. The statement in the packet says the late submittal sheet, A dash one point O, the site plan shows an attempt to identify what the reconfiguration might look like. So is was that presented or have has Jenna had it or Ms. Thornborough and her department had a chance to review it?
From our design review hearing, there was the comment to that it wasn't clear as far as where the common area was. So there was a late submittal for P and Z hearing that satisfied that at thirteen point three percent. Since then, in narrowing up our A C H D access points to preserve the silver maple, we increased that to fifteen point six percent. So we're five, almost six percent above what's required.
And has the city seen that plan showing the fifteen percent? Is it?
That information was provided, I believe, last
Was it verbal?
To Jenna. So it would be probably considered a late submittal as far as that, but the intent to exceed that ten percent has been satisfied.
You can ask, you know, choose it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? And just again, while Mr. Hatch is here, just a factual point. The fence between Harren Park and this property was preexisting. It's there now.
Okay.
Thank you. Just so you know.
So it's it's existing.
Yeah.
Got you, yeah.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Hatch. Uh, at the end of the testimony, you'll have an opportunity to come up and clarify or rebut anything that happens between now and then. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Um. And, uh, thank you. Um, I just do want to note, uh, for Colin will be bringing, uh, the floor plans. They took a second to register with the printer and printout, so they will be on the way. Um, there's a link in the agenda to everything that's been submitted with the application. So if you click within your packet on the link to the agenda. Um, if that doesn't, uh, work for you, um, if you go to the Garden City home site. Um, go to departments, development services, applications. And then it's the second one down and you scroll through. It's, um, alphabetical and chronological order. You should be able, uh, to get there, uh, to the HANS application.
Thank you, Colin.
Thank you, Colin. And. And as Mr. Hutch did a great job on presenting the application. And. And he did note that there was a split recommendation between the design review, uh, who did recommend denial on the planning and zoning commission. Uh, that recommended approval. I'd like to also note, uh, that this application starts on page 25 of the packet. Um. And this is a planned unit development in addition to be in a subdivision. And so a planned unit development does allow for deviation to code, provided that these objectives are also achieved. So I'll read this into, in, for you. Um, the purpose of the plan unit development is the, the intent of this section is to provide for well-planned developments, which conform to the objectives of this title, but may deviate in certain respects from the zoning map and district regulations. It is not the intent that the plan unit development process be used solely for the purpose of deviation from the dimensional standards in the district unless the following objectives are also achieved. Um, provide for a maximum choice of living environments. Um, I will summarize them there up on the screen. If you want to read the full, full text. Uh, create a more useful pattern of open space and recreational areas. Establish a development pattern which preserves, preserves and utilizes natural topography, geological features. Seen like this as trees and other vegetation and prevents the disruption of natural drainage and patterns. Use land more efficiently than is generally achieved through the conventional, conventional development. And develop a land pattern in harmony with the land used in city transportation and community facilities and objectives of the comprehensive plan. And this is the, the document that the city received, uh, last week. I do need to apologize if it does specify, uh, the, the 15.6% of open space. Uh, staff was in a conference when it was received and not back in until today. And so this hit, uh, your packet as a late submittal likely, uh, when it came in. I don't remember if it came in Wednesday or Thursday, but it certainly went, uh, prior to planning staff having the ability to review it. Staff was under the, the assumption that it was dealing, uh, with this walkway, increasing it to, um, eight feet and did not look at this area and understood, understand that it was intended to, um, preserve the tree as well. And. Uh, but this is on page, uh, 24 or 25 of the packet, 25. And so this is the latest version that's come to you. And the waivers that is, that are requested in this application. Or staff has identified, if not specified, but in conflict with code, um, are greater than four dwellings on a single common drive. Uh, the allowance for garage to exceed 50% of the front entry. Uh, the front entry, uh, to be flush or, um, not. Flush or setback from the garage. Um. And I, and, and the setbacks as well, as Mr. Hatch had mentioned. Um, some of the items that you'll see tonight have come in since the recommendations. And so there, there is some diversions from the recommendations. Um, the, the, and because planning and zoning, um, did recommend approval for this item. I'm going to focus on the issues identified by the design review committee. Um, so this particular lot, um, is shown in a city adopted plan. It's called the original town circulation network plan that was adopted in 2009. Per resolution 91409 shows that this lot would be required to have connectivity to the green belt. And again, 2009 is, is a minute ago at this, at this point. And there's been some changes in the neighborhood. Um. But that, I believe that that's part of the reason that you see, uh, the applicant proposing this public connection, uh, to the green belt. As well as, um, some. An, an interesting connection to the city park where there's the, the, um, pathway in the city park that runs over here. But as Mr. Hatch showed in his presentation, the connection point in that area is just full of hydrants and utility boxes and trees, et cetera. And so, um, as he, he articulated that, um, was the genesis for providing this pathway in the location that it's in. Um, to note typically, uh, multi-use pathway, um, both Ashto and the Federal Highway, uh, Administration would recommend a 10 foot minimum, um, and based on the use, go up to 12 or 14. I did find some documentation, I think it was from Ashto noting in special circumstances and limited areas, you could probably get away with eight feet. Um, and to note, because of these two wall planes here, there would definitely be some shy space. And so that's the building that, um, that feeling of going by a building, you wouldn't ride or walk right next to the structure. You'd move yourself in, um, and a good rule of thumb is typically about 18 inches minimally. Um, and so since both of the recommendations, there's been that increase to the eight feet. And that really would probably provide, um, a five foot minimum pathway, which is about the narrowest that you could have with two people walking down the path. Um, the, as Mr. Hatch already noted, uh, there, there was concern or, um, the council did bring up. There was concern about, uh, the, the crossing of the driveway and, and the safety thereof. Um. There is also concern about the location of the driveway, um, being the predominant feature. Um, from the public realm of the, the streets that the, um, design, design review committee, I had noted. And. And Garden City Code 84B1, Purpose of Design. Um, D and E would speak to this, promote neighborhood and walkability and residential, uh, design. That's, I'm section D, section E, create open space and amenities that contribute to the aesthetics of the community. Provide an attractive setting for buildings and provide safe and interesting outdoor spaces for residents. Um, and it also, uh, goes to that objective in the plan unit development, 86B7A5. Develop a land pattern in harmony with the land use density, transportation and community facilities, objectives of the comprehensive plan. Um, as already brought up, there's, um, as the application has been amended over time. The clubhouse and garage were all on lot one initially. And now. Uh, they are on a separate lot. And the, the recent submittal with the, the, the sketch planner for the, um, preliminary plat does note that lots nine, 10, eight and seven would all be common lots. Um. Garden City 84B3C requires that less than 50% of the building line, uh, be dedicated to garage. Um. In, in the reconciliation of, uh, the planning and zoning commission, uh, recommendations for approval. Um, as this has gone through further processes, uh, staff has recommended conditions eight and nine on page 64 of your packet. That would require an easement in a contract for the common lots and guest parking for the duration of the use. So to tie that specifically, uh, to the homeowners association. Um, Garden City Code 84B3A2B. Um, notes that the door cannot, the front entry door cannot be flush or behind a garage. And so that would be one of the waivers requested. Um. And then, so the trees, one of the concerns, uh, that the objectives state in the plan unit development is to establish a development pattern which preserves and utilizes. And it, it names the trees as well. And I do apologize in your, um, materials, it had to assume that all trees would be removed. Uh, but it sounds like tonight that there would be the effort, um, to preserve that tree. I would note that if, uh, the council does move forward, um, in, in approving this, um, application, that that perhaps be an additional condition noted, saving the, uh, silver maple. And, um, because there were, uh, two divergent, uh, recommendations. Um, that were presented to you of both the design review and the planning and zoning. There is an approval decision document starting on page 48. Following the planning and zoning commission's recommendation, and it has been reconciled somewhat to clarify easements, waivers. Um, as already noted, number eight and nine on page 64 to require easement and, um, some sort of contractual documents for the common lots and guest parking. Um. That the public access could not be impeded. That's on page 68. Um, on page 69, number four. Um, that the applicant cannot do work on another property without permission. Um, I would like to note that the arborist report does call out trees on the city's property as well as the pathway connection to the green belt that's already, uh, noted. And that's, uh, where you see that condition. The actions tonight, oh, excuse me, um, the denial draft, which is a strict denial. Um, following the PNZ recommendation is on page 73. And if you move forward in that direction, I would request that we really look at those findings and that some of the items have changed in the material that's here before you. And so there may be, um, different things to look at within the findings. And the actions tonight, uh, that you could take are either to sustain either the PNZ or the design review recommendation, um, as presented or as amended or remount the application, uh, to one or both of those bodies, um, or continue for missing information. Um, as Mr. Hatch has noted, should you approve it in this form? Tonight, there is a separate action, uh, to allow for construction on and the use of city property, um, directly adjacent to this property, which is the next item on the agenda. And. Again, I think I've gotten through all of the concerns and I stand for questions.
Uh, Ms. Thornboro, uh, we've kind of focused this entire discussion around the action of the design review committee. Uh, however, the planning zoning committee obviously had a different opinion, that five member board. Uh, what, what, why did they approve it? What did they like about this project?
Um, Mayor, members of the council. Um, it was noted by the planning and zoning commission that this is a difficult lot in the size and the shape. And so utilizing the lot is not necessarily a straightforward application. Um, they did note that they felt that the floor plans did provide different housing, uh, types. Um, there was not the discussion, some of the same discussions in depth that there were, um, at the design review, uh, committee. Um, but in general, I, my recollection off the top of my head, it was that it's a difficult lot that would be hard to, to redevelop with this product type.
Yeah. Thank you. Uh. Questions, Ms. Thornboro?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Thor, Thornboro, sorry. Um. I, I want to make sure I understand some of the, the, the statements in the packet and the statements that you've made this evening. Um, so just for clarity, has staff had the opportunity to thoroughly review the, the submittals, the late submittals?
Mayor, Councilmember Jorgensen, um, I would say that this is the, this document that's up right now is the one application component that staff has not reviewed. Um, staff has noted that that eight foot is there. Um. To verify that nothing, uh, changes. I do see that there is a note that there is the 15.6. I can see it up right now, noting 15 point six opens qualified open space. But getting into the nitty gritty and making sure that, um, those calculations add up. Uh, staff has not, um, just noting, looking at this document, I think it might be hard for staff to do that and not take this, um, plan's. Um, word for it in that it shows 15.6%, but I don't see the, the areas, uh, noted with the, the square footage. Um, and maybe I'm missing it just looking at it, uh, right now. And I might, uh, request when the applicant does the rebuttal, if there's anything additional besides the open space and the connection to the green belt that has been changed. Uh, because if there is not, that would not affect the other, um, components of the code that have been reviewed. Thank you.
Okay, other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So do we have a final? Final plat or preliminary plat? Or is it? I mean, that, I guess, I know it sounds like they re, they added a lot for the. For the garage or the clubhouse, sorry. And, but do we have a? I guess my question is, is, is there things missing that are required for review? Like, do you have a final plat? And it said, there's no master plan. I just want to make sure I understand. What might be missing? Cause there's, it's also full of conditions and so. Approved those conditions and lots of that. So I just want to understand.
Um. Mayor, Councilmember Jacobs, I believe this is what we've been utilizing as our, our plat. Um, which. At some level is lacking what we stand, what we typically see in a plat. It is noted as a site plan versus a permanent preliminary or final plat, uh, rendering. Um. Staff does endeavor to try to adequately condition where there might be, um, information lacking within the submittal documents that it could go through the process. Um, or in, in. That it could go through the process um or in so. Uh staff would suggest that we we would believe that it's adequately conditioned. Uh without having that actual document, of course, there always could be a hiccup. And if that would require changes to this application, then it would run back through the process.
And and so if I'm hearing right, you're saying, do you feel it is currently adequately conditioned? Gone all these different conditions that, I mean, that to to keep it moving forward.
And mayor, council member Jacobs, we certainly would hope that it is. Um I don't have a crystal ball there, as you get more information on documents, there always can be. Something that changes, changes the application somewhat. And and so the more in depth that those application materials are as they come through. Uh the more likely that there won't be changes. Uh however. Uh it should be noted that even when you think you have perfectly in depth. Um application documents, when an applicant gets into uh the construction thereof. They find things which can change things as well, uh whether it be soils or. But on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's not a perfect process.
Never.
This is a reminder, subdivision plats require a sign. Sign off by the city engineer and the city clerk prior to recording. If there were substantive changes, then they uh may require an amendment. Action by the council if they if there were something substantive, and I'm sure. Yes, 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 yes. So now.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, yes, man, good. Yeah, there's uh thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh Ms. Thormburl is um. There've been questions raised about the fence uh on the backside of the property and. Between the property and and green belt, is the um is the concern of the design review? That is that, is that uh explained on page thirty two? Is that the totality of their concern uh by proposing a fence between the development, the green belt and Heron Park? Well, the Heron Park uh fence is existing, is that right? Or the the, okay, so that's an existing fence. The subdivision is turning its back and eliminating what could become a pleasant, common, open area natural feature. So that's not a a code based or or. Uh that that's a that's a judgment and and as someone who who lives um close to a river. Very common to see a property delineated by four foot fences and 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 so forth. So I'm just wondering, is that, is that the, does that describe accurately the total concern of the design review folks?
Mayor, council member Heller, um the design review actually didn't get stuck on that discussion point. Um much, uh that that's mostly um noted within the the staff report. Um but I think where you would see that is noted is related to those objectives. Of creating a useful pattern of open space and utilizing the amenities onsite. But that that wasn't something that was specified um in their decision.
Okay, so so um it Mr. Hatch, well, I guess I'll have a chance to ask Mr. Hatch a question. Thanks, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, any other questions? Hey, uh with that, we will open the public hearing on S U V F Y twenty twenty two dash zero 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 two. Uh no one uh has signed up that's here in the room. Uh appears our Zoom connection is working tonight. So do we have anyone joining us remotely that would like to testify on this application? If you, if you do, please use the raise your hand. Function in the Zoom. And the clerk will let me know. Okay, uh seen none, uh not to record reflect that we had no one uh indicate an interest in testifying. Mr. Hatch, uh would you join us again and we'll. Let you uh address some of the items that have come up. And uh any closing remarks you'd have before we close the hearing?
In as professional a manner as I was able to get, the uh trees in question are of concern or not on this property. The only tree of value is that twenty six inch uh caliper silver maple. Uh I just had our landscape architect text me, she's, she just wanted to clarify that. The recommendation for onsite survey, there were no trees of significant value. The only one that if we wanted to to look at preserving would be that silver maple. As far as the consideration for the common area, um the request was to achieve the the ten percent required common area. In early August, we submitted uh revised site plan for the the P N Z hearing that had thirteen point three. And the only thing that's been modified in the last two months would be the one that we proposed with the fifteen point six. And so our intent would be to have that condition to achieve at least the minimum of of the ten percent required. If if you would want to condition that to fifteen, we feel we can significantly uh achieve that as well. Which is fifty percent more than what's required by code. Uh I'd like to to respond to council member Heller's comment about the staff report. Uh a significant amount of the staff report was written originally about five months ago. And uh spoke, you know, you know, fairly uh critically about the original design of this development, which I would say. In some ways did turn its back on on the the park and the park access. Uh and part of that was we're struggling with how do you access the park when you got a a sector box and a bunch of trees and fire hydrant and a bunch of utilities? And so it was like, well, we we provide this access, but it goes to nowhere. And so I read that too, and I was like, wow. And Hannah, you're like, you know, I'm trying here. Um so part of uh the redesign and redevelopment of those five months with with uh. With the designer view committee was to try to achieve a pedestrian connection to the park. And we feel that at at this point, we're not turning our back to the park. We're actually engaging and providing that pedestrian access that currently is not there for that park.
I I'm glad you clarified that and and uh if I may, so um. It it wasn't conditioned by uh planning and zoning that you remove that fence along the backside of the hounds, uh was it? That's not part of the conditions they they've stipulated.
It wa- it wasn't.
But I, but I heard you, uh I I guess I don't want to infer your comment about the fence being. Uh it's my word, not yours, negotiable. Uh uh there there's no. Uh obligation in any of the uh language we have here that it even from the plan.
No, but if city council deems it appropriate to do so, we are more than happy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Uh Mr. Hatch, I'm sorry for not asking this earlier. It's a, it's a bit of minutia, maybe I I don't, I'm not an architect. Uh can you help me understand this drawing? Um it's on, so it's on page twenty six, I think it's. Let me check that, double check that. Twenty five. And it uh so it's just referencing this pathway that that uh goes between units three and four.
Yes.
And I don't even know what to call these, I'm tempted to walk up to the screen and point, is that okay with you?
You can.
Go ahead, thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Page, great question. So I'm working with designer view, one of their comments was, well, if you're going to create a a space that's going to naturally be congested. Uh due to the 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 nature of, you know, providing this access, are there ways that we can calm that? Are there ways that we can create mechanisms that will force people to slow down? One of those would would be vegetation, you know, low plantings. And so people feel like, you know, they need to calm down and 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 slow in that area. And so that mechanism, those proposed uh planters are there to encourage people not to speed through there. And to force a habit of safety.
So so they're planters, what the.
That's what they're currently proposed as, yes.
And in the in the drawings, I see and and you know, again, I I realize this is preliminary. But uh is this uh, is this a sort of a paver drainage pathway? Is that what that is?
We will, yeah, we would assume being this close to the river that we're going to have groundwater issues and we're going to need to provide pavers. The intent would be the pavers, if we do have pavers in our driveline, those pavers are a significantly different color than the pavers of this pathway.
Thank you. Yeah, I was concerned about um. Just the uh. Water that stands there, and it sounds like it wouldn't stand because of the way it drains, you know, then freezing because of. Being kind of sheltered from the sun between these tall buildings, um but uh sounds like you've accounted for that, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have one final question.
Yes.
You mentioned it earlier, um Mr. Hatch, but I. Uh we had that one resident that was that made a public comment about uh obstructing their view and things like that. You, I thought you had mentioned that you had worked with them on that, can you just describe for me that again? I kind of missed it when you were talking about the first time.
Yes, so uh in our original development, which we proposed for our neighborhood meeting. Our clubhouse was a little bit bigger and in doing so, we were encroaching on our our setback to that neighbor. Uh in addition, that the heights of basically all the structures were taller. And her comment was, wow, you know, we're going from from what's there now, which is basically an extension of the park to a development. And so in doing so, we we pulled our clubhouse back and and shrink that to make sure that it was not impeding in that setback. We weren't going to make that request for that neighbor. And then uh we lowered all of the buildings as a concession and a request. Part of that was the roof line and part of that was in working with the fire department in in lowering that. It it helped alleviate some of the concern for uh fire safety to to the the residents, but also to that development, just ease of access.
She'd also mentioned obstructing their view, is that because of the vinyl fence, was she, was she wanting something not as solid? I maybe I I just thought I s- no, what were she talking about more the height of the buildings, you think?
To best of my knowledge, it was the height of the buildings.
Trying to find the letter here.
We could certainly provide more rotting.
In the packet. I just wanted just in fairness to her, since she made that public comment, wanted to. Just have you clarify what you had done to. Help her. Alleviate some of her concerns. Anybody finds it first, I mean.
You hired him age.
But I'm assuming you worked with her based on her. Public.
Yes, and she was at our last uh P N Z hearing and she was very happy to know that we got rid of our request to. Uh encroach in in that side setback.
Well, thank you for working with her, I I wanted to make sure that we. Did that, thank you.
Hey, uh any other questions? Mr. Hatch. Hey, very good. Any final words, Mr. Hatch?
Uh. I I'm excited about this development, I think it's a great location, it deserves a great project and great projects take longer. Um I was fine getting beat up by a design review for several months because it creates a better project. And we had to respond to those comments every time we went before them. So um not every project fits the code just right, but we did want to try to make something that we feel that will exemplify Garden City. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hatch.
Thank you, Mr. Hatch. Okay, uh with that, we will close the public hearing on S U B F Y twenty twenty two dash zero zero two. And I'll turn it to the council for deliberation. I think as we start, just a couple of uh. Items I want the council to be aware of, uh to my knowledge, uh the city has never prohibited that private residents from building a fence. Uh along their property boundary. Uh that's typically controlled by the homeowners association. The bulk of the common area in this instance, or the public area, of course, is between the green belt and the property line. Um and then uh I'm very happy to hear that uh the person concerned about their loss of their view. That that was addressed, uh thank you, Mr. Hatch, but uh. Uh you don't have a right to preserve a view. Uh with a, you know, because of obstruction of a new development. So I just want to caution you about a couple of those areas uh as we get into the discussion.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, that's on page one seventy five of the packet, Phil, you're welcome.
Okay, uh council, it's open for deliberation.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
And fellow council members, um. I am very sympathetic to this, to the fact that this is an unusual lot size and and I applaud Mr. Hatch and the design. Um it it's it's a lovely development, I appreciate it. Um my big concern is um. A packet that is peppered with the words noncompliant um and. I'm a little bit shaky when our our director of development services. Cannot confirm compliance to something that's in my mind a fairly significant issue for any development. Um regarding code. And so uh I have to, in my opinion, there are two things. I would, I would like to allow more time for development services to review the late submittal. And confirm compliance to code or at least confirm the reported adjustment to the fifteen point six percent. Um adjustment to open spaces. I'd also like to um get confirmation that there seems to be a discrepancy between the trees. Um that were assessed by hmm legacy Dubois. And what's being reported here this evening. Um I I am a a big fan of trees. I've planted many and I know how long it takes for them to um provide uh shade and and the benefits of their growth. Um and so, you know, particularly in the comments, when I see, you know, plans to demolish all trees being in direct conflict with code. Um that raises a bit of alarm for me. And so I would like to verify um A that the the two trees that were identified in the report by Legacy Dubois. Are on um city property and not on the development property. And that in fact, um the that would narrow down to the single silver maple, right? That would be acceptable um and con- so get confirmation on that. So in my mind, I'm not prepared, I don't, I think there's enough here, it's interesting, it's, and I like the floor plans. As everyone knows, I I like to see family developments or or developments that allow for families. Um and I like the creative way that um this development has been put onto this regular lot. I'm a little bit concerned about um access and. this development has been put onto this regular lot. I'm a little bit concerned about, um, access and uh, leaving the, the, the access, the vehicular access into the, the, the units, however, it, it seems that fire, fire and services aren't concerned. And therefore, I, and I, I would be inclined to weigh that. So overall, uh, I get very concerned when I see a lot of waivers and waivers requests. I understand the nature and the reason that my inclination for the purpose of allowing services to verify the, the late submittal information, to get confirmation on the, this, the trees, I would be inclined to continue this.
Okay, further discussion. Um, Mr. Mayor, I, I think those are reasonable concerns, the, the verification, uh, process you talked about, and I, and I, and I share your view of the, uh, aesthetic, as it were. This is a creative project and, and use of that land. So, uh, if those are, if those are your two, uh, concerns, uh, the ones you expressed, then I, I, I think those are reasonable.
Final plat.
Yeah.
Good too. I think that was one of the concerns. We don't have a, we have a site plan, but not a final preliminary flat. And I think it'd be nice to get that finalized, too, so we could actually see that reported. So, maybe continuing it.
Further discussion? Clarification, Ms. Thornborough.
Um, Mayor, if I may, um, should the council make a recommendation, or not a recommendation, a, a motion to continue this item, I would request clarification, uh, if this would close the public hearing and just come back for a consent agenda with those items verified. Or if we would leave the public hearing open to allow for additional documentation.
Well, I've closed the public hearing, not that I couldn't reopen it, uh, but if we're down to verification what was presented tonight. Uh, I don't see a reason to leave the hearing open. We had no public comment. We've got a couple of points, uh, to, to verify. Uh, I think.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
And, and then we, Councilmember Jacobs actually is requesting the final plat.
Right, well, you, cause you do not have a final preliminary plat.
Um, Mayor, Councilmember Jacobs, and I believe that is the case. I believe it's the one that I showed that we've been using, that state site plan.
It's a site plan, but not a. It is that key to helping you move forward.
Um, Mayor, Councilmember Jacobs, as, as I had, uh, noted previously, I think due to the number of conditions and staff, when, uh, Ms. Beal went through the staff report, really trying to think through those next steps that she's familiar with. I, I do believe that she's endeavored to try to think through what would be incorporated in those documents. But certainly, we could look through that and make sure that there's no conflicts, um, and verify, uh, the information.
But would a, would a final preliminary plat kind of settle those for her so that she's not endeavoring?
Um, Mayor, Councilmember Jacobs, what that would really do is start identifying those, those property lines, um, and, and how it would interface with a lot of the, the discussion items, uh, that we've had tonight. So those, that common open space, uh, what's common, the common lots, uh, et cetera. Um, and those are more the legal lots on a plat where you start sussing that out versus the overall, how, how does the development um, interact with, with itself?
I guess some of my concerns, I don't want to make that requirement and have that take a really long time to do. When we have a pretty good idea of what we're going, and when we have these conditions, that that's all we're looking for, not imposing something major on him when we have a pretty good idea of what's gonna be.
It will be done before it, the plat gets signed. So, so like I mentioned before, if they if they present a plat that isn't in conformance with the site plan here, then it'll get,
It gets.
It gets kicked.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, that's, that's how that works. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, point of order.
Yes.
Uh, if the council is asking for additional information, I would recommend that you reopen the public hearing. If, if the council doesn't want new information, then I, I think continuing the deliberations would be fine. But I think, uh, if we're continuing only the deliberations, then should not be considered any new information.
Okay, so what I've heard so far, council, is verification of items that have been represented by Mr. Hatch tonight or requested by Ms. Thornborough tonight. If there's something else, then we, we can leave the hearing open. If it's a verification process, then, uh, it would be, that would be accomplished, and this would come back on the consent agenda.
And, so, Mr. Mayor.
And, and before, just a second, before, Jenna.
Um, Mayor, thank you for another point of, uh, clarification, just thinking on my feet. And the, the one big thing that I think a preliminary plat could do for the applicant further down the road is show, uh, the building envelope. And where that really becomes an issue is actually a building permit, uh, because building, they're building codes, um, that dictate fire requirements based on how far away, uh, the property at line is to the actual construction. And so I would think that that would be the biggest thing that a preliminary plat might show with those building envelopes.
Uh, th- thank you for, for that. Uh, my, my interest projecting a little bit into the applicant's shoes is, uh, if they're gonna go to the expense of formalizing this into the preliminary plat to conform with the site plan, uh, then, to be fair to the applicant, uh, the items we've talked about would be the only items, really, because they come back, and then you want to change things around some more. That's, that's not to me, fair to the, uh, to the applicant. So, uh, yes.
You know, I just, um, I think I, uh, would join in in some of those same thoughts, uh, that, uh, I'm, I'm prepared today to give the applicant assurances. Um, I, I think we can all acknowledge that it's a, um, a unique piece of ground. I, you know, we tend to, I think, as a council, think about the best and highest uses for any piece of ground, and because it is, uh, unique, I, I think that that has, um, likely led to the, uh, unusual amount of non-compliant comments that, that we've, I noticed that too. And, and frankly, for the, the record of anybody that's listening, you know, when we get these applications, that's one of the first things I look at. Is, you know, hey, you know, what's the, what's of concern to staff? And that's where I try to focus. And, and so I, that caught my attention, like, as, as it did for Council, uh, Member Jorgensen. Um, here, I, I think, uh, what is different about this is, is, uh, that, that this information, I believe, can be verified. Um, uh, it seems, uh, perhaps, in my opinion, um, unnecessary, uh, to, to continue this, uh. Once it's verified, I, I think it could be on the consent agenda. I don't, I don't particularly need to see this again, and maybe that, maybe I'm the only one that feels that way, but.
No, I think a consent agenda is just appropriate.
So do I.
Mr. Mayor, clarification, however, if, uh, Mr. Hatch goes through the verification process and discovers, and Ms. Thornborough, that the trees are actually on his property. Um, I think my recommendation and ask would be that it be amended to retain the three tree, three trees. So if that can be achieved without bringing it back in, in, in a consent agenda.
Okay, um, here's what I think we're gonna do. Uh, I'm gonna reopen the public hearing just as a matter of saving a problem for the applicant, if if the information he got at the last minute on texting, or however you got it from your arvers, that there was some, something that you could possibly have misunderstood or whatever. So, I don't think you think that's the case, but the point is, uh, I can hold the public hearing open, and then, uh, if the verification process, uh, dealing with these, I want to make sure we know what the, the couple of items that we want to verify, the amount of open space and, uh, and the, uh, location of the trees that are gonna be saved. Those two things, uh, are verified, uh, then the, the out, one outstanding issue would be, um, you know, preliminary plat, I don't know what the timeline would be if that would show the specific setbacks. Is that what you're talking about, Ms. Thornborough? Okay. If, uh, if your engineer could, uh, formalize that, I, it's very close here, just looking at the dimensions on the site plan when I look at it. But this is my world I deal in, so I don't have any concern at all about it, to be honest with you.
No, I think based on the comment that you made, that, you know, things change, they get kicked back. Well, that, that satisfies.
Yeah, it's gonna have to comply with the conditions.
And I don't want to hold up Mr. Hatch.
So, and that. So we'd be looking in that case, uh, we'd be looking at verification of the open space and, uh, tree locations on their property relative to trees that would be uh, tree that would be saved, it looks like. So is that the understanding of the council?
Mr. Mayor, that's my understanding.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, uh, I've reopened the public hearing. If those verifications come back, uh, then uh, are, are an ex agenda. The agenda item will be to close the public hearing, and we'll take an action. Cause I'll have to, if I open the public hearing, I've gotta close it. If, uh,
So, the next meeting, we'd be able to approve Mr. Hatch's development.
Yes. Yes.
Therefore, Mr. Mayor, do you need a motion to continue?
Yes.
I so move.
Okay. Second, I have a motion to continue the public hearing on S U B F Y twenty-twenty-two dash zero 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 two to, what's the date?
The October twenty-fourth.
October twenty-fourth. And, uh, if I may add, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, make or the motion in second, the purpose of the continuation is to verify representations that the applicant made regarding the percentage of open space in the uh, site plan that was presented and, uh, the, uh, determination of these twenty-six inch silver maple location, and if there are any other trees worth saving on the site, the trees off-site are a different issue. Is that the understanding to make the motion?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Understanding in a second. Yes. Okay, Lisa, you got that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right, thank you. Got a motion? Any discussion on the motion? Uh, here and then I'll fair the motion and say hi.
Hi.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hatch. Item G two, uh, is not germane until the next meeting. This will show up on the next agenda. If the, uh, previous motion carries forward, then, uh, we'll take care of item G two next time. Item G three, this is a resolution eleven thirty-three dash twenty-two. Adopting the Ada County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council, um. I, I hope that you all saw that there is a separate link within the council packet and in that this item apparently was, is nine hundred pages long, give or take, um.
Councilmember Jorgensen probably read every day.
Um, I, I have no doubt that all members of the council probably got into, into reading, uh, this, this, um, this is resolution, um, one-one-three-three dash twenty-two. Uh, and it would be adopting the twenty-twenty-two Ada County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Um, this plan is a plan that, uh, needs to be re-adopted every five years and looked at every five years. The group of individuals that are looking at the plan, uh, keeps growing, however. Uh, right now, it's a twenty-one member plan. I don't remember, uh, what the twenty-seventeen plan was. Um, but there's a nineteen-member stakeholder group, including Garden City. Uh, Mr. Schmidt and myself, uh, both participate in that process. Um, it is reviewed annually, but this is a full adoption that occurs every five years. Um, and the, the reason that the city would want to have this plan is because it's directly tied to FEMA funding. Um, it also informs, um, emergency planning within the county and, uh, creates a stakeholder group within the county. Volume one is a full county volume that pertains to all of the members. And then volume two has specific indexes, um, that pertain to the different member agencies. And so tonight, if you adopt this, you would adopt volume one and then the Garden City portion, so that you don't adopt all the other cities' plans, um, et cetera. Uh, there are special districts, et cetera, et cetera. Um, the plan addresses extreme, or floodplain, extreme weather, drought, earthquake, landslide, landslides, volcano, um, in the form of ashfall and wildfire. Um, particularly for Garden City, the, the concerns that are noted are floodplain and extreme weather. Um, and with that, I stand for any questions.
Questions? We see no questions. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve resolution one-one-three-three dash twenty-two for Garden City adopting the twenty-two Ada County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan, including Garden City annex and dependencies.
Second. Got a motion and a second, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing number for call rule.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, that concludes the business on our agenda tonight. And entertain a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. We stand adjourned.